Sir, it is again what's going on with the vendors under the bridge. We are up at Pine Grove Park, we're not down at the boardwalk, but we have been a vendor in the park now for over thirty-five years. I remember even as my child, my grandfather, when he was a lion, there was a vendor in the park and it was a lion. The Lions have been there, have been in this town now for ninety years. It's among our services. We provide eye care, hearing aids. We're a national organization. We're required to give back a hundred percent of the money we raise and profits to the community. And in Pine Grove Park, the concession trailer is our biggest money gainer. We believe in playing on a fair basis. If it's going to be vendors in the boardwalk, let them all get vendor licenses, let them be like us, get out there, pay sixty, seventy thousand dollars for the trailer, maintain it every year, do what's required. We kind of think there's going to be some problems when those trailers get there and Edison Shores condos, start watching all those vendors and there's going to have to be porta-potties with them, which is not a bad thing, but they're going to have porta-potties with them. You're going to have them at all four turnouts at some point in time. They're going to be profit as it looks now, it's not for nonprofit. We wish we could take a cut of their take because in Pine Grove Park over the last six years, we have seen decline in sales. Reasons being has been many, mainly because of the Bald Diamond and its problems. During rainstorms, they flood out and they can't use them, so they moved to Sixteenth Street. But we've been there and we've done many things in Pine Grove Park. We built the Casibo. We did the flagpole when we had the international tournament. There was a time when they looked out to sing the National Anthem and there was no flagpole. The Lions bought the flagpole because a patron ran to her car and got a little flag. She's standing out in the middle of Bald Diamond waving the flag while they sang the National Anthem. The Lions went out and bought that. We had to pay for sidewalk repair just because people use our trailer and it didn't get to the trailer, so we increased the sidewalk. Those are the things the Lions have done with their money on top of what comes into us for the community to use for blind. But what we're saying is be concerned with all the vendors going under the bridge. We just do not see all those dollars going to be there. And you're going to have a lot of costs putting them in. We want to try to keep them as far up on the bridge because we're fair. Johnny Dog was there last year, the year before, I believe. If he becomes a real food vendor, that's great, but then he's going to have to follow in the same rules as we do. He's going to have the health department looking at him at that point because right now he's a peddler. I'm not sure, I don't think the health department has looked to him as a, what he's doing like they do us. They come in two, three, four times a year, make sure we're up to code and what we're doing. Our members all have to go through. Ruth Ann Taylor from the health department comes out once a year, goes through the club, teaches us everything that we need to do. We had to go out and get a vendor license for healthcare and all that, for health of serving food like any restaurant does. Those are the things that we got to do. Those are the things that the other vendor that's going under there is going to have to do, and it's things that every vendor that under the bridge should have to do. Just get with the rules and do the things that are required of a club or required of a food vendor. That's what we ask them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Two things. I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name earlier.
That's all right. Everybody knows.
And second of all, I'm glad you came here and spoke tonight. I support the Lions Club and you have my full support personally.
Thank you. We have a lot of support. We get people that come from Jackson, Battle Creek, all the time. They're current people.
You do a good job and I appreciate it. Thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience?
Mike McCully, Justin Time Concessions, eight thirty acres. Well, I just want to commend the Lions Club on everything they are doing. I support them a hundred percent on everything and I agree, I couldn't say much more of what he said. Everything that he said is absolutely true. We all, everybody's working hard at this. I just want to say that everything that you guys have done successfully so far, we hope you move forward. If there's any questions tonight, I can, we're real excited and we're going to be open in a few weeks hopefully. And I just hope that you guys keep moving forward on everything that you've got going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience?
Angela Kelly. I'm here now. I'm going to change hats, not a mom, not a hometown girl. On behalf of Citizens for a Vibrant Community, we came up and supported this. I am the community liaison for that group. And we still believe that this is a great idea for the community, for the hot dog vendors. As far as my understanding is, is that Johnny Dog has a push cart and he can still get a peddler's license and he can still sell his hot dogs. Or, like the Lions Club said, Sixteenth Street is open, I'm not sure if that's still the fact or not, and Twenty-Fourth as far as vendoring. So, to say to the city of Port Huron and especially to the city administration and city council that he doesn't have the opportunity, he does have an opportunity. It's the same opportunity that he's had all these years. I'm very excited. I know Mr. McCully has purchased, I believe it's over sixty thousand dollars for the trailer. He's having the local schools name it, as far as I know, maritime theme. And I think it's really great for the community. And I just wanted to thank the city administration and city council for moving this forward and to help regulate the boardwalk. I think it's a great start and I think that's why everyone's forgetting that this is just a start. This is just the basis, a base plan for this. And there's always room for business. And what I've always known is that the more competitive there is in business, the better everybody does. And especially the people that are purchasing it. So I just wanted to encourage the city council, again, to keep on with the contracts and everything that they've done. And we really appreciate, once again, giving a local community person, business person, an opportunity, once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so.
As a citizen of the city of Port Huron, I come here to speak to the city council. My name is Brian Moller, M-O-E-L-L-E-R. Two things. There was two article, one, an article in the Times Herald by Mr. Schrader a few weeks ago, that the city council wasted time letting the public speak on the hot dog vendor. The way I read that is we want to take the right of citizens away from freedom of speech. We cannot control what public audience comes and talks about, and the public certainly has a right to speak here at the city council meetings. Second of all, I've seen where our freedom of speech has been challenged again by our local newspaper. It offends me as the city of Port Huron to have the editorial board of the Times Herald slam the city council on a regular basis. And then when one of our council members sends a letter to the Times Herald and asks to be printed and is denied that right, I find that highly offensive as a citizen of this community, that they can write an article about the EDA slamming the city council, and yet when a council member sends a letter to the Times Herald editorial and requests that it be printed, that it is denied. I think we as citizens of this community should be outraged at the Times Herald's behavior. And I, for one, as a citizen of this community, am outraged that the Times Herald will lower themselves in time to freedom of speech in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so. Public audience is now closed. Communications and petitions?
Petition oh-nine dash zero-zero-one is from residents, former residents and friends of South Park requesting that Lincoln Park, located between North Boulevard and South Boulevard, be renamed South Park.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Lewandowski, second.
Second.
Supported by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher.
Stay a little while.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Supported by councilmember Stevens.
That's okay.
Thanks, Anthony.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
May I ask, is this also going to schedule it for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Consent agenda. Motion.
I'd like to have item six, nine, and thirteen removed.
Six.
Nine and thirteen.
Nine and thirteen removed. Motion for the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Stevens, second by councilmember Byrne. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. With the passing of the consent agenda, resolution number three was passed confirming the two thousand nine assessment role. Resolution number five, approving and declaring a single lot assessment in a total amount of six hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents for snow and ice removal and special trash pickup. Resolution number ten, scheduling a public hearing for April twenty-seventh, two thousand nine to hear comments on code case number zero-eight dash zero-zero-seven, thirty-twenty Nern Street to ascertain and determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by chapter ten, section ten dash two-eleven, and chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash three of the Port Huron City From the city manager, number one, or I'm sorry, upcoming events, April fourteenth, the charter commission meeting at seven PM in room four-oh-eight of the municipal office center. April seventeenth, Hiding New Field Concert at the McMoran. April twenty-third, Las Vegas Hits, The Big Stage at McMoran. April twenty-third, Liquid Assets Video at the MLC at seven PM. April twenty-fifth, International Symphony Orchestra presents sax at the Symphony at McMoran. April twenty-sixth, Twenty-seventh Annual Huron Model Railroad Show and Swap at the McMoran from ten AM to four PM. April seventeenth and eighteenth, the Ice Hawks Playoffs. April fifteenth is the Tea Party up on Pine Grove Avenue. That was added by the mayor and also added by councilmember Byrne. Today is Thomas Jefferson's two-hundred-and-twenty-sixth birthday. Thank you, Mark. From the city manager.
Mayor Moller.
Councilmember McCullough.
May I request a five-minute recess?
Yes. Any objections? We're in recess for five minutes. Thank you.
Unit price bid of McKenzie concrete in the estimated amount of seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the two thousand nine annual sidewalk contract.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher, second. Supported by councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion.
Ah, Mayor Moller.
Councilmember Byrne.
Who's North Street in St. Clair County?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number one.
Is authorizing payments one through seventeen.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Lewandowski, second by councilmember Stevens. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number two.
Is approving an economic development strategy for the city of Port Huron.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Stevens, second by councilmember Byrne. Discussion, comments, concerns, discussion.
Mayor Moller.
Councilmember Stevens.
I think that this is an important resolution. And I think that it's something that we should move forward on. And I believe that it is time for the city of Port Huron to say that we will be the leadership place, that we will be where people come to discuss these issues.
Thank you. I would also like to say that I feel this resolution is very important. I think Mr. Brown gets paid and the administration gets paid to bring suggestions to us. We make decisions on those. And I think for those in the community who badger Mr. Brown and the administration and feel that they are not good enough to come to the city council members and talk to us and address those issues with us are out of line. And those that write emails saying that they run the city of Port Huron, I am the mayor, we are the council, Mr. Brown is the city manager, and none of us would make such a statement. I am offended by those comments and I strongly support this action tonight. Anyone else? Comments, questions, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Moller.
Mayor Pro Tim Fisher.
I too want to say that I fully support this resolution and going forward with these points for the city. I moved to this community, gosh, I don't know, it's coming up on twenty years now ago. And ever since I moved here, we've talked about how Port Huron is on the edge, we're on the cusp, good things are just about to happen. And they're always just about to happen. It's time, it's time for someone to take charge and leadership and for Port Huron and its citizens to decide their own destiny and move forward. And I believe that this plan does that. I fully support it.
Thank you.
Mayor Moller?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I too, I support this plan. I just have one question concerning some of the emails that came with it. This is not going to set any kind of funding or anything yet, is it? For these different types of...
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Byrne.
Ah, just a quick question. We use specific names of people and usually these kind of things are, you list positions or something and just, I hope we're not bounded forever to have these people in these positions to eternity until we do pass another resolution or something.
I put the names in there because there were some strong feelings by some people that think they run the city, that they didn't like some of these people. So I specifically put those names in there to let them know that the city council was going to leave the city and that we were going to work with these individuals in particular. If they're replaced, we would work with their replacement.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. I would request that clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution, number four.
Approving the agreement with L-three Communications Mobile Vision Incorporated for the purchase of an L-three flashback two-digital in-power video system for patrol cars and authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the necessary documents.
Motion?
Mayor Moller?
Councilmember McCullough.
The adoption of resolution number four.
Second?
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher, moved by councilmember McCullough. Comments, questions, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Moller?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm just glad, Chief, or Chief Port, that we are doing this. I know I took a couple rides in the police cars along this last year or so and, you know, they didn't have, some of the one car, when it didn't even have a camera in it. So I think it's time that we step up into twenty-first century technology here for our places. You know, like you said, it's for their protection and for our citizens' protections. I want to congratulate you in using grant money too.
Thank you.
Mayor Moller?
Mayor Pro Tim Fisher.
We use a vaguely similar system to this in the bus system for the transportation. It has totally removed any questions over what's going on in any of the situations in the buses. Everything is stored onto hard drive. But for people who don't know, this is actually video, video capture of things that go on in and around the police cars. But it has totally removed any questions over anything that happens and it's a permanent, full digital record of everything. So it's great.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the issue? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number six.
Is designating the week of April twelfth through the nineteenth, two thousand nine, as National Community Development Week.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher, second.
Support.
Support by councilmember Lewandowski. Discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Ah, Mayor Moller?
Councilmember Byrne.
I realize this is just a, no real teeth to it or anything like that, but had a problem with just endorsing the federal government spending money this way and don't see in the constitution where it's authorized. So just wanted to vote no on it and not have it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number seven.
Would approve the sale of the city-owned vacant lot on Little Street between Twenty-eighth and Twenty-Sixth Streets to Marty Torrello.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Supported by councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? I have a question for Ms. Harmon. Kimmy, no. Through discussions, I've talked to the Daliers, everything's okay there?
Yes.
Okay. Second question I have for you is, which is going to come up later on, how did we come up with the price of five hundred dollars when I figured out the three parcels that we're selling and the next one, we're selling the same amount of property for a hundred dollars more to another individual? I figured the price for this should be four hundred and eight dollars based on if we sold them all equally. I was wondering where you came up with the value?
Well, we, Mayor and councilmembers, we asked for a minimum bid of five hundred based on a couple of different factors. One, we consulted with our city assessor. We took a look at what we had sold, some previous parcels that were of similar size. And the housing corporation at that time, when they originally expressed an interest for the lot on the other side, we set that as a minimum bid of five hundred as well. So we thought it was only fair to do the same for Mr. Torrello on the other side.
Thank you. That answers this one. The next one, don't go far away. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Just good to see the vacant land going.
Yes. Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number eight.
Is approving the sale of the city-owned vacant lot between Vine, Dove, McCormick, and Twenty-Sixth Streets in Port Huron Township to Torrello Group Limited Partnership.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Support by councilmember Dorn. I was going to call you councilmember Marty, I'm sorry. I'd just like to say that for the taxpayers out there, this is a piece, a small piece of property in Port Huron Township that the city's been paying property taxes on for years. We're selling it for a dollar to Mr. Torrello to get it off. The money, the money we're actually saving is we will no longer have to pay property taxes on this property. So I think this is a good move and I support it totally. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Ah, Mayor Moller?
Councilmember Byrne.
A similar question. How do we get to a dollar price as opposed to a five hundred
Correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, the property's landlocked and we can't get to it. That's where the property, there's really no value to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes. Resolution number nine.
Is approving the tentative boundaries of the Coase Street Neighborhood Enterprise Zone and scheduling a public hearing for May eleventh, two thousand nine to hear comments on the establishment of the proposed zone.
Mayor Moller?
Mayor Pro Tim Fisher.
For the adoption of resolution number nine.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Fisher, second.
Support.
Supported by councilmember McCullough. Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Councilmember Byrne.
Ah, yeah, I'm a little bit interested on why a neighborhood enterprise zone that's mostly for residential and owner-occupied dwellings and condos and stuff and looking at what's in here. I see council on aging, a radio station, a restaurant bar, assumed to be ice cream shop. I'm just a little bit puzzled why we chose this area.
That one I don't have the answer for, so.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm actually pleased tonight to be able to tell you that we have considerable interest from an investor in adding second and third story to buildings directly west of the M.DOT Pocket Park. And in order to do that, to create residential lofts, we have found that downtown, the creation of a neighborhood enterprise zone has been very helpful. It's been a nice incentive, a great tool for us to use in getting those downtown lofts established. And this would continue with that area. The reason why we crossed the street, albeit there's nothing there right now that would probably lend itself to it...
Okay. And one other question. Uh, we're allowed up to 15% of the residential property in the city to be neighborhood enterprise zones. Do we have any other areas we're hoping to help revitalize through this?
Not at this point. It's very helpful if we have some inkling as to where developers might want to go. We've looked at the established neighborhoods and unfortunately, the benefit there is with just new construction and infill housing. We did have an area that we were interested in two years ago and they opted to go forward with the development without that in place, so we did not proceed with it. Certainly we can if and when we get to a point where we have some other interest. Again, with those 10 contiguous parcels, it's difficult, a little more difficult with infill housing to have an area that's suitable.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
Just would like to counsel, I do own one of the buildings in that zone.
Um, you're going to stay there?
Glad to.
Counsel, any objections to having Mr. Dorn vote or not? No objections?
Is he in the lot?
Mr. Levisay, any problem with Mr.?
I didn't even know this was coming.
Councilmember Dorn voting? He owns property in there?
Well, I think it would create a conflict that you could get around that or avoid the problem by fitting the rest of your crew.
Okay. I have...
It does, but it does have...
Okay. It would probably be cleaner if you didn't though.
Yeah, I have no problem staying here.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Levisay and Kim. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Staying.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number 10.
Number 11 is...
Oh, I'm sorry, number 11.
Um, approving the vacation of a portion of State Street, Forest Street, and Gresham Avenue with the reservation of a full with public utility easements.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Lewandowski, second?
Support.
Supported by councilmember Stevens. Um, Mr. Babett was, uh, Mr. Ogden spoke to him earlier. This does not include, uh, the drive along the river there, I forget the name of the street. Park, Thomas Edison Parkway, uh, that will remain open at this time, so.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Uh, this was in front of the planning commission last Tuesday. Uh, one resident did come up and speak and have some concerns. And his number one concern, which I thought was a good point, is he was concerned about uh, some kind of early warning system for spills on the Blue Water Bridge, that was his biggest concern. And his other concern was the traffic flow through that part because of all the, the streets that would be taken out, that would be turned into, they could call the Saks. But we were assured by Mr., uh, by Dave there that this traffic pattern would actually help the flow of traffic through this area.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, comments, concerns? Discussion? I'd just like to comment, Mr. Babett, and I know I told you after my fit last week, I liked to smell the roses too and I drove by on that parkway today and it's a beautiful parkway and, uh, I'd hate to see it closed.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
I'd have one thing too. It is going to add some green area to the, to that area down there. Um, the parts, I don't have the map in front of me here. Yeah, there's parts where I think it's like Elm Street or Forest Street, wherever it is down there, that when they're taken out, that's all going to become green area that the state will maintain that we don't have to maintain.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number 13.
Is approving an agreement be entered into with Anderson's probate at 2731 Pine Grove Avenue to sell boat launch permits on behalf of the city.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Byrne, second?
Support.
Supported by councilmember Stevens. Questions, comments, concerns? Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I had a question for the chief. Uh, had this removed from the consent agenda because I think it's very important for customer service and for the people coming in from out of town on the weekends and all that. Uh, glad to see probate step up and start offering these. Uh, are they open on the weekends? Are they open after 5:00? Could you explain what their hours might be that people could get these permits?
Mayor and council, um, I'm not 100% familiar with all their hours. I know they're open shortly after 7:00 in the morning and I know they, they tried to, probably before that, that's when I went by and actually had the meeting with, uh, Mr. Anderson. Um, he indicated to me that as long as they're open, they'll, they will sell the permits. Um, he was excited about the opportunity. He gets a lot of people come into the store and ask if they're able to do that. Um, we discussed with him the idea of placing a sign at the ramp sites so it would indicate to out-of-town folks where they could get a permit. And we also discussed the idea of placing his name and location on the city website so it would also direct people to his, uh, his location. I know though, he is open for certain on, on Saturday and Sunday and that's going to be a benefit when the city hall's closed. And, uh, I do believe he's open later into the evening, so, uh, I see this as a win-win both for him, for more walk-in traffic, that's what he was primarily excited about, and for us, that it'll help those out-of-town folks, uh, more easily access, uh, the launch permit.
Yep, I definitely agree.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mayor Muller? Councilmember Lewandowski?
I have shopped at Anderson Probate. They are open fairly late into the evening. It really just depends sometimes, but are we going to, are we planning on doing any other, like the one across there on, was it Water Street that I don't know, is it Dixie's or the pro shop? Are we going to do any others, places like that?
That, to my understanding, that's closed.
Oh, is it?
Um, but there's only, from what I understand, I could be wrong, something could have happened within the last week. There's only one bait shop, uh, solely dedicated bait shop in town right now.
Okay.
And if anyone else approaches, we certainly would be glad to work with them, uh, to allow them to sell permits also.
Thank you.
And Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Uh, this isn't limited just to bait shops. Any business that was interested in selling them could also do that, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So party stores, et cetera, which cater a boating crowd as well?
Yeah. Um, might want to approach a party store at 13th and Water for the boat ramp there. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number 14.
Approving the agreement with ALD Thermal Treatment Incorporated to lease a portion of the industrial building at 2347 Dove Street to be used as warehousing space on a temporary basis.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fisher, second?
Support.
Supported by councilmember Lewandowski. Questions, comments, concerns? Discussion?
Uh, Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
In the agreement, the city pays all utilities. I'm kind of curious what utilities are there.
Utilities? What utilities do we pay? Mr. Levisay?
Mayor and council, uh, frankly, I don't know what utilities that we have there. I know that we, we pay them now because we have to keep the utilities on, uh, in the building. And all they were interested in and have been interested in is, is warehouse space. Uh, in fact, uh, we, it's actually of a benefit to us in the sense that, uh, insurance companies don't like empty buildings. Uh, and, uh, because we have to keep the, uh, the building insured and they're only going to be using part of it, uh, so we would have to maintain insurance on it anyway. Uh, and there was no sense in both of us in terms of the insurance, no sense in both they and us, uh, paying for the insurance on the same buildings. But so far as the utilities, and the electric's on, Dave may be able to tell us more, probably water, uh, but, uh, I don't know what, what we use.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We have the gas, electric, water is on in that building right now and we do mow the yard during the summertime. We keep the gas, the heat at about 50 degrees, 55 degrees right now. We have to keep that building heated in case somebody comes and wants to try to buy it.
We are going to, uh, be using the, uh, ourselves, part of the, uh, property this summer for, because we're going to be doing sewer separation work down in the Bancroft Street area and we're using that to store, uh, uh, equipment that, uh, that we need. And, uh, they're going to be actually gaining access to it through the fence in the back. They're going to have to install a gate so that, uh, we have security, uh, still have security there.
Okay.
Councilmember Byrne?
Just, I'm a little bit concerned with the, uh, lease rate. I realize it's only a month or two and I'm glad we're getting used out of the building and everything, that's great. I'm just heating up the whole thing. We're keeping it at 50 now. If they're, they need to keep it at 65 or something like that and you got to heat the whole building and they end up doing this in January, I'm just a little bit concerned about the utilities at that point. Hopefully it never becomes an issue, but something we should probably keep an eye on and it gets to the point where we're paying more in utilities than we're getting in the lease, extra utilities, that is. Something we'd want to know about, I think.
Correct. I mean, it's, it's, it's warehouse for them. I don't think they keep warehouses very hot.
Depends on the workers.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number 15.
Is approving the sale of two vacant city-owned parcels located at the end of 15th Street south of Bancroft Street.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Byrne, second?
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fisher. Discussion, comments, questions? Kim, this is the one. Explain to me why we're charging the one couple $100 more for the same square footage. Please say it's not because they didn't vote for me, okay?
Mayor and councilmembers, uh, you have before you the resolution for the two lots. They're identical, you're correct, 33 foot wide by 100 and 130, 123 feet in length. Um, there is a memo, I believe, as well, that was distributed and what I guess, if you don't mind pointing out to you, what we did was we had a sealed bid process for the lot and we sent out to all of the adjacent property owners and asked for them to provide us with a bid. We again asked for a minimum bid of 500 and then in their proposal to indicate how they would like to use the property so that we could review that and then make a recommendation to council. Of those, we received four bids. The individuals, um, that were directly adjacent to the property, Mr. Wilson and Mr. and Mrs. Reichenbach had bid on the property. And in doing some of our research, we, uh, that in 1923, we purchased this property for $130 with the intention of extending 15th Street. Obviously that was never done and it was never dedicated as a street because if it had been dedicated as a street, our normal procedure would be to simply vacate the street, split the lot in half and give, a gift to each of the adjacent property owners. So we weren't able to do that. The individuals that are immediately adjacent to it, then Mr. Wilson and Mr. and Mrs. Reichenbach came in with a sealed bid and those bids were of a different amount. So while the resolution before you tonight is indicating what the submitted bid price is, certainly you have, um, the priority, the privilege of making any adjustments you wanted, but I felt that we needed to give you what the bid amount that they each had submitted was.
Let me ask you then, um, Reichenbach, were there any other bids over for that property that they purchased and was it over the 550 amount?
Yes. Also, Mr. Meadows, who...
I'm satisfied. Thank you. Mayor Muller?
So that we could review that and then make a recommendation to council. Of those, we received four bids. The individuals, um, that were directly adjacent to the property, Mr. Wilson and Mr. and Mrs. Reichenbach had bid on the property. And in doing some of our research, we saw that in 1923, we purchased this property for $130 with the intention of extending 15th Street. Obviously, that was never done and it was never dedicated as a street. Because if it had been dedicated as a street, our normal procedure would be to simply vacate the street, split the lot in half and give a gift to each of the adjacent property owners. So we weren't able to do that. The individuals that are immediately adjacent to it then, Mr. Wilson and Mr. and Mrs. Reichenbach came in with a sealed bid and those bids were of a different amount. So while the resolution before you tonight is indicating what the submitted bid price is, certainly you have, um, the priority, the privilege of making any adjustments you wanted. But I felt that we needed to give you what the bid amount that they each had submitted was.
Let me ask you then, um, Reichenbach?
Yes.
Were there any other bids over, for that property that they purchased and was it over the 550 amount?
Yes, also Mr. Meadows who...
I'm satisfied, thank you. Mayor Muller? Councilmember Lewandowski?
Kim, uh, Mr. Wilson was the one that was at the planning commission that had to have that one piece of lot too to get to that back piece of property?
Yes, that's right. He is, he does have a home on Bancroft Street that is landlocked and he's been using it over the years for access.
So nobody's landlocked now, right?
No, Mr. Wilson's property is still landlocked and this would allow him access by awarding him the, um...
He wouldn't be landlocked anymore with this purchase, right?
No, that's correct. He would not.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Uh, Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Burn?
Along the same line of getting ready to use vacant parcels and stuff over on, uh, 10th Street, that waterfront property there?
Mm-hmm.
I was still hoping to see a for-sale sign on it so people know it's for sale.
That particular property is, and Mr. Levisay can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been told that it is waterfront property. So if we were to do anything with that, it would have to go before a vote of the people.
And?
Uh, the interest that we have had on that has been limited to an individual who would have liked to perhaps purchased it and had, um, for his own private use or perhaps family or friends, boat wells. But the access is difficult. The parking lot there, this is a great mystery that I have not been able to solve, although I'm determined to before we, before I end my career, let's put it that way. In 1977, that lot was purchased for $75,000 and then paved. The paving was done by the adjacent property owner for a parking lot. And I can't find anything else prior to that that shows agreements on the use of the land or easements, anything of that nature. So if we would like to go forward with the sale of that property, one, it would require a vote of the people and two, it's going to require a full-blown title commitment and research done.
And if I recall correctly, uh, last time I brought this up, I asked if we were, had any plans to put it on the ballot so we could get a vote of the people in order to sell it. And the answer was, nobody's shown any interest yet, which is kind of why I said, let's get a for-sale sign on there, see if there's interest. You had to do one or the other first.
That's true.
The only access would be then by water, right? Legal access?
Well, the parking lot.
No, it would actually be through this parking lot that, for some reason, the adjacent property owners have paid to have that paved first and we paid to have it repaved when we did. We do have a sewer outfall through there.
The property, this parking lot belongs to the city then? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
I would think the property owner with the parking lot would be very interested in buying at least a portion of that piece of property, having their parking lot there.
Yeah, or the whole thing, uh, for that matter. Maybe something we could approach, but we'd have to put it on the ballot. But you could see if he's interested. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Burn?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?